May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
எப்படியே இருக்கிறீங்கள் நிருபம் 10 மதிகாரம் 37, 38, 39 வசனங்கள் வாழ்ச்சிக்கலாம்.
The Book of Epistle to Hebrews Chapter 10, Verse 37, 38 and 39.
For yet a little while and he that shall come will come and will not tarry; now the just shall live by faith. But if any man draw back, my soul shall have no pleasure in him. But we are not of them who draw back unto perdition, but of them that believe to the saving of the soul.
வருகிறவர் இனும் கொஞ்ச காலத்தில் வருவார், தாமதம் பண்ணார். விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே நீதிமான் பிளைப்பான், பின்வாங்கி போவானானால், அவன்மேல் இன் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராது என்கிறார். நாமோ கெட்டுபோவ பின்வாங்குறவுலா இராமல், ஆத்துமா ஈடேற விஸ்வாசிக்கறவுலா இருக்கிறோம்.
கத்ருடியே பரிசுத நாமத்துக்கு மைங்குண்டாவுதா?
May the God's Holy Name be glorified.
வருகிறவர் இன்னும் கொஞ்ச காலத்தில் வருவார், தாமதம் பண்ணார்.
For at a little while and he that shall come will come and will not tarry.
ஏசுவின் வருகையை நோக்கி சபை போய்க்குண்டுருக்கிறார்.
Our church is progressing towards the coming of Jesus.
ஆந்தவுடை வருகை தான் நம்முடை இயலக்க.
And coming of Jesus is our target.
ஒரு கிருசவனுடைய பூரணம் என்பது ஏசுவின் வருகையில போய், அவரோட அவன் இணைவு.
The perfection of the Christian is a triggering, engaging or gathering is coming.
அதுக்கு முன்பாகும் நம்முடை வாள்க்கெல் பல பாதைகளிலே நாம் கொண்டுசெல்லப்படுகிறோம்.
Before that, we are taken in different parts in our life.
இங்கே நாம் பார்க்கிறோம், ஒருவன் பின்வாங்கி போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராது.
And here we can see, but if any man draw back, my soul shall have no pleasure in him.
இன்றைய மெஸேஜ், "பின்வாங்காதே!"
And today's message, "Don't draw back."
எந்த சூனலையிலும் நீ பின்வாங்காதே.
At any situation, don't turn back.
இதுதான் இந்த கால வெளில தேவன் தனுடை சபைக்கும், தனுடை ஊழியர்களுக்கும், தனுடை விஸ்வாசிகளுக்கும், தன்னைப் பின்பற்றுகிற, தனுடை வழிகள்ல உற்சாகமா இருக்கிற ஒவ்வொருவருக்கும் தேவன் இந்த கால வெளில கொடுக்கக்கூடிய வார்த்தை.
And this is the word the Lord gives in the morning time to the believers, to the servants of God, and those who are believing, and those who are following him, and those who are coming after him.
ஏன் இந்த வார்த்தை அவர் பேசுகிற?
Why the Lord speak this word?
பின்வாங்குதல் என்பது பொழுது கடைசி காலங்களிலே சபைக்குள் நடக்கிற ஒரு தீவிரமான வல்லமியுன ஒரு செயல்.
And drawing back, and it is the hasty work or speedy work of the church that is taking place in the church.
எவ்வளோ வேகமாக அவிக்குறிய வாள்க்கெல் வந்தார்களோ, அதைவிட வேகமாக அவர்களை வெளியே இளுக்கும்படியாக வல்லமிகள் போறாடுகிறார்.
How speedily they enter into the spiritual life and the powers are working to draw them to such a speed?
பின்வாங்குதல் என்பது பலையர்ப்பாட்டிலும் இருந்தது, புதியர்ப்பாட்டிலும் இருக்கிறது.
And this turning back, it is experienced found both in the Old Testament and New Testament.
ஆனால் கிருபையினாலே நம்ம அனைவரையும் கத்தரியமட்டுமாய் பாதுகாத்து வருகிறார்.
But by the grace of God, and He is protecting and saving us till now.
ஒருவேளை நாம் சபையில இருக்கலாம், ஆவிலே நாம் பின்வாங்கினவர்களாக காணப்படலாம்.
We may be in the church, but we are the one may be drawn back in the spirit.
அதைக்குறித்து நாம் சரியான உதத்தில வெளங்கிக்கொள்ளவேண்டியது அவசியம்.
It is very needed for us to understand well.
விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே நீதிமான் பிளைப்பான்.
The just shall live by faith.
அந்த விஸ்வாசத்தை உட்டு ஒருவன் பின்வாங்கி போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராது.
If any man draw backs from this faith, my soul shall have no pleasure in him.
அப்படியே ஒருவன் பின்கு பின்வாங்கினால், அவன் கெட்டுபோவான், நாமோ கெட்டுபோக பின்வாங்கக்கூடாது என்று சொல்லியிருக்கிறார்.
And if anyone draw back unto perdition, they should not be turned back for the perdition.
இந்த பாதையினுடைய பெயர் விஸ்வாசபாதை.
And this path is called the path of faith.
இந்த வழி விஸ்வாசமார்க்கம்.
And this religion or way is faith religion.
இது ஒரு சாதாரண மனிதன் கடந்துபோக முடியாது, விஸ்வாசிகள் மட்டுமே இதில் கடந்துபோக முடியும்.
Ordinary person cannot travel or cannot cross this path, only a spiritual or believer can travel in this.
விஸ்வாசம் இல்லாமல் ஒருவனும் தேவனுக்குப் பிரியமா இருப்பது கூடாத காரியம்.
Without which faith and no one is well able to be pressured and to go.
நம்கெல்லாருக்கும் பெயர் விஸ்வாசிகள் என்று பெயர்த்திருக்கிறார்.
And we are all having the name as believers.
ஆனால் நம்மில் எத்தனவேறுக்குள்ள தேவன் எதிர்பார்க்கிற விஸ்வாசம் இருக்குறதென்று நாம் சொல்ல முடியும்.
But how many of us can say, and the expected faith that Lord is having, do we have enough?
விஸ்வாசம் என்பது நம்பப்படுகிறவிலின் உறுதியும் காணப்படாதவிகளின் நிச்சயமாயிருக்கிறார்.
And faith is the substance of things hoped for, the evidence of things not seen.
விஸ்வாசம் பைற்சிவிக்கப்படவேண்டும்.
And faith must be exercised.
அதற்காக நாம் மூய்ச்சியடுக்கவேண்டும்.
So we must take steps for it.
அதுக்காக நாம் கிரியை செய்யவேண்டும்.
And we must work for it.
விஸ்வாசம் வார்த்தையில் மாத்திரமல்ல.
Faith is not only by words.
அது கிரியைகளோடுக்குட மூய்ச்சி செய்து பூரணப்படுகிறதென்று காண்கிறோமே.
And we are saying that to be perfected, there is exercise through the works.
அந்த விஸ்வாசத்துக்காக நீங்கள் தெய்லி தேவனைத் துதிக்கவேண்டும்.
And we have to praise for this faith every day.
தேவனை நீங்கள் துதித்து, விஸ்வாசத்தை, தேவனை மைங்குப்படுத்தி, விஸ்வாசத்தில் முலு நிச்சயமாய் நம்பி, விஸ்வாசத்தில் நீங்கள் வல்லவர்களாய் மாறவேண்டும்.
And praising God every day, having assurance with whole faith, and we must become the heroes of faith, are strong in faith.
ஆந்தவர் அவரு ரேஷியை உயிதிருக்கிறார், அந்த ரேஷியோக்கு, நம்முடைய அந்த அளவுக்கு நம்முடை விஸ்வாசம் வரவேண்டும்.
And God has a ratio, and to that extent, our faith must come.
பலையர்ப்பாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் வேறு, புதியர்ப்பாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் வேறு.
The Old Testament faith is different than the New Testament faith.
பலையர்ப்பாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் அவர்களைக் குறித்து நாம் எப்படியே 11 மதிகாரம் முழுவதும் படிக்கையியேலும்.
And we are able to see about the faith of the Old Testament in Book of Hebrews Chapter 11 Holy.
ஆனால் எப்படியே 11 கடைசியில வரும்பொழுது, அங்கே நிருபக்காரன் சொலுகிறார், அவர்கள் நம்மையெல்லாம் பூரணராகவில்லையென்று சொலுகிறார்.
But the writer of the epistle in the 11th chapter lost his section, he says, "And they were not made perfect."
அவர்கள் அக்கணியின் உக்கரத்தை அவித்தார்கள்.
And they quenched the fiery violence of fire.
அவர்கள் சிங்கங்களின் வாயை அடைத்தார்கள்.
They stopped the mouth of lions.
ராஜ்யங்களை ஜைத்தார்கள்.
And they were overcome the kingdom.
ஒலகம் அவர்களுக்குப் பாத்திரமாயிருக்கவில்லை.
And the world was not a vessel to them.
அப்படியே ஒரு வாள்க்கை வாள்ந்த அவதுளை விட புதியர்ப்பாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் என்பது, அதைவிட ரெட்டிபான மடங்கு வரவேண்டும்.
And when compared to these Old Testament saints and these New Testament people, must come to the double fold of faith.
பலையர்ப்பாடு விஸ்வாசம் என்பது ஒரு சாதாரண விஸ்வாசம்.
The Old Testament faith is an ordinary faith.
ஆனால் புதியர்ப்பாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் என்பது மகாபரிசுதமான விஸ்வாசம்.
But New Testament faith is the most holy faith.
அவர்கள் விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே, விஸ்வாசத்தினாலே என்று அவர்களைக் குறித்து சொல்லியிருக்கிறார்.
And it is said about them by faith, by faith.
ஆனால் யூதா 20 சொலுகிறது, "நீங்களோ பிரியமானவுளே, உங்களை, நீங்கள் மகாபரிசுத, உங்களுடைய மகாபரிசுதமான விஸ்வாசத்தின்மேல் உங்களை உறுதி படித்துக்கொள்ளுங்கள்" என்று யூதா சொலுகிறார்.
And Jude 20, Jude says, "But ye beloved, building up yourselves by your most holy faith."
அப்போ பலையர்ப்பாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் வேறு, புதியர்ப்பாட்டு விஸ்வாசம் மகாபரிசுதமான விஸ்வாசம்.
Old Testament faith is different, but the New Testament faith is the most holy faith.
அப்படியானால் தேவன் நம்மிடத்தில் எதிர்பார்க்கிறார், அந்த விஸ்வாசத்தை நாம் காத்துக்கொள்ளவேண்டியது எவ்வளோ கவனமாக இருக்கவேண்டும்.
So we have to stay here in the matters of keeping the faith which is given in the Old Testament period.
பௌலாக இருந்தாலும், விஸ்வாசத்தை காத்துக்கொண்டால்தான் நீதி இங்கிரீடம்.
Even if it is Paul, if he keep the faith, then he will get the crown of riches. விஸ்வாசத்தை காத்துக்கொண்டுருக்கறவர்களுக்கு பைப்பில் சொலுகிறது, அவ்வடை பிரச்சனமாகவுள் விரும்புற யாவருக்கும் அதைத் தருவார். And they keep the faith, and those who are learning for the appearing, he will give to everyone.
ஒருவேளை உங்களுடைய விஸ்வாசம் கடந்த காலங்களிலே தடுமாறியிருக்கலாம்.
Sometimes your faith may be stumble in the past days.
ஆனால் பைப்பில் சொலுகிறது, "விஸ்வாசத்தினால் நீதிமான் பிளைப்பான்."
But the Bible sees that just shall live by faith.
பின்வாங்கி போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராது.
If any man draw back, my soul shall have no pleasure in him.
விஸ்வாசத்தை விட்டு ஒருதன் பின்வாங்கிட்டானா, அதனாலதான் நம்ம பின்மாற்ற காரணின்தா அவனுக்குப் பெயர் கொடுக்குறோம்.
If any drawbacks out of this faith and his call as a backslider.
விஸ்வாசத்தைக் குறித்து நீங்கள் ஆயிரம் மெஸேஜ் கேட்டிருக்கலாம்.
And you have heard many messages about faith.
அது முக்கியமல்ல.
That is not important.
ஆனால் நமக்குள்ள எவ்வளோ விஸ்வாசம் கட்டி அளிப்பிருக்கிறம், நாம் அதை சிந்திக்கவேண்டும்.
And what sort of faith that we have built it up, we must consider.
ஏனென்றால் நமக்கு கொடுக்கப்பட்ட விஸ்வாசம், ஒருவிஷையும் உப்புகிப்பட்ட விஸ்வாச.
Because the faith which is delivered to us is once, it is given or delivered to us.
வேதம் என்ன சொலுகிறது?
About the scripture.
யூதா 13 வசனம் என்ன சொலுகிறது?
And what the Jude 3 verse.
"நன் பொதுவான ரச்சிப்பைக் குறித்து உங்களுக்கெழுது, நன் கவனமாயிக்கிறேன்."
And I was so careful about writing a scripture.
ஆனால் இப்பொழுது பரிசுதவாங்களுக்கு ஒருவிஷையும் உப்புகிப்பட்ட விஸ்வாசத்துக்காக நீங்கள் தைரியமாய் போறாட வேண்டும்ன்று எழுதி உணர்த்துவது எனக்கு அவசியமாய் கண்டது என்று அவர் பேசுகிறார்.
And it says, "I gave all diligence right unto you to exhort you that ye should earnestly contest for the very faith which was once delivered for the sins of God."
உங்களுடைய விஸ்வாசத்தைக் கண்டு கத்தர் ஆச்சிரியப்படணும்.
And looking at your faith, God must amaze.
ஏசுவின் துவலகத்தில் இருக்கும்பொழுது ஒருசலுடைய விஸ்வாசத்தைப் பட்டு ஆச்சிரியப்பட்டார்.
When Jesus lived on this earth and looking into some of the faith, he was amazed.
ஏசுவின் வேளிலும் நான் இப்படிப்பட்ட விஸ்வாசத்தைக் காணவில்லையென்று சொல்லு.
I have seen that belief among Israel.
ஆனால் அதே ஏசு ஒருசலரைப் பாத்து, "உங்கள் விஸ்வாசம் எங்கே என்று கெள்விக்கட்டார்?"
But seeing Jesus looking at others, asked, "Where is your faith?"
அப்போ பார்ட்டவென்றியட்டுல் அவர் பார்ட்டுகிறார், கடிந்துகொள்ளவென்றியட்டுல் கடிந்துகொளுகிறார்.
Where he want to appreciate, he appreciated, and where he want to reproach them, he reproached.
ஏசு உயிர்த்துள்ளுட்டார்.
And Jesus was resurrected.
இப்பொழுது சீசில்லோடு எடைபடுகிறார்.
And he was dealing with his disciples.
மார்க் 16 கடைசியில பார்க்கும்பொழுது, அவர்டை அவிஸ்வாசத்தைக் குறித்து அவர்லைக் கடிந்துகொண்டார்ன்று வேதம் சுட்டிக்காட்டுகிறார்.
And the Bible clearly depicts that, and looking unto that unbelief, he reproached them.
அவர்க்கு உயிர்த்துள்ளந்த பின்புகுடை, இவளுடைய அவிஸ்வாசத்தைக் கண்டு அவர்க்கு வெறுந்த வேதனை உண்டானது.
And after resurrection, looking unto the unbelief, and he got grieved.
அவர் ரெண்டு காரியத்தைக் குறித்து கடிந்துகொண்டதாக மார்க் 16, 14 கில் சுட்டிக்காட்டுகிறார்.
And 16:14 says, "And he was grieved in two matters."
ஒன்று அவர்டை அவிஸ்வாசம், மற்றொன்று அவர்டை இருதைய கடினம்.
One is their unbelief, and another is hardness of heart.
இந்தக்கு ஏன் பின்வாங்கக்கூடாது என்பதை நாம் வெளங்கிக்கொள்ளவேண்டும்.
Why we have to understand that we should not draw back?
நம்ம பாவத்திலும் வெளியே வந்திட்டோம்.
We came out of sin.
சபைக்குள் வந்திட்டோம்.
We come to the church.
ஒரு அடைக்கலப் பட்டனத்துக்குள் வந்திட்டோம்.
And we are in the stronghold of God.
தேவனுடைய கட்டுப்பாட்டுக்குள் வந்திட்டோம்.
We are under the control of God.
ஆனால் இந்த வாள்க்கை நம்ம சரியா செய்யாட்டா, இதுக்கு பனிஷ்மெண்ட் வந்திரும்.
If we do not do this life properly, we will get the punishment.
நான் சொலுகிறது நீங்க வெளங்கிக்கொள்ளாங்க.
And understand what I say.
நீங்க வெளியே இருந்து நாம் பாவன் செய்த காலங்கள் ஒரு கால.
And those are the times that you were outside and committed sin.
அதுக்கு நாம் அப்படியே போயிருந்தா, அதுக்கு ஒரு பனிஷ்மெண்ட் வாங்கியிருப்போம்.
And if we go in such a way, and we will receive the punishment.
ஆனால் அறியாமயிருள்ள காலங்களில் தேவன் காணாதவர்போல் இருந்தார்.
But in a known season, and he was like a man who was known to me.
நம்மை ரத்தத்தினால் நம்மை கலவின, நம்மை சமீபமாக கொண்டு வந்துட்டார்.
By his blood, he cleansed us and brought us to his church.
ஆனால் இப்ப இங்கே வந்த பிறகு, இங்கே உள்ள பிரமாணத்தை நீ கிள்ப்படியிலேனா, அதுக்கு பனிஷ்மெண்ட் வாங்கக்கூடாது.
After coming to the church, and if you not obey to the laws, you have to attain the punishment for it.
வெளியே தப்பு செஞ்சி சாப்பாவாங்கிறது வேற இதுக்குள்ள வந்திட்டு நீ தப்புப்பணி சாப்பாவாங்கக்கூடாது.
Committing sin outside and getting the curse is different than committing a godsin after coming to the church.
ஒரு பெரிய மீட்டிங்கள பாஸ்டர் டியூ அவர்கள் பேசும்பொழுது.
In a big meeting when Pastor T U Thomas spoke.
அவருக்கப்பட்டது முடியவில்லை.
And he was not eating.
அந்த மீட்டிங் அவர் வந்தாரு.
And he came to the meeting.
கார்லதான் கொண்டு வந்தாங்க.
And they took him in the car.
வந்து சேர்ல போய் உக்காரல, அப்படி நேர ஸ்டேஜிக் வந்தார்.
He sat on the chair and came directly towards the.
அதெல்லாம் அவர்டை கடைசி கால கூட்டங்கள்.
And that is the last days of the meeting.
ஏனா அவருக்குப் பேச நிக்க முடியாது, எவ்வளோ கண்டிஷன்ல வந்தார்.
Because he cannot stand in that condition.
வந்த உண்டு நேன் கையையடுத்து கும்புட்டு சொன்ன வார்த்தை.
And when he came and saluted to the people, let's say the word.
யாரு இந்த மார்க்கத்தில் இருந்துட்டு நரகத்துக்கு போய்டான்.
And staying in this way, don't get to help me.
இதில் இருந்துட்டு நீ எங்க போய்டாதா? நரகத்துக்கு போய்டா.
And being in this fellowship, don't go to him.
உண்மைபிரியமானவர்கள்.
That is true.
நாம் இதில வந்துட்டு பின்வாங்கிட்டோம்னா, உலகத்து மனிஷனுக்குக்கு நேர்ந்ததைக் காட்டுறோம், நமக்குதான் அதிக கேடுந்து நடக்கு.
After coming to this way, and if we draw back, and the thing which is coming to happen to the worldly people is more than to us.
சோதோமுக்கு நடந்தது, கோமராக்கு நடந்தது நமக்கு எல்லாருக்கும் தெரியும்.
We all know what happened to Sodom and Comoros.
ஆனால் ஏசு கிருச அதைக் குறித்து புதியர்ப்பாட்டில பேசும்பொழுது.
But when Jesus Christ spoke about a new testament.
கப்பர்நூகமே உனக் ஆய்யோ.
And woo unto heaven.
திருசிதோனே உனக் ஆய்யோ.
And for thee, O to two.
பெற்சாய்தாவே உனக் ஆய்யோ.
And O to the bedside.
உண்மில் செய்யப்பட்ட பலத்த கிரியைகள் சோதோமில் நடந்திருந்தால், அவர்கள் மனந்திரிப்பிருப்பார்கள்.
And all the words that happened in you have happened there to the Sodom, and they would have repented.
ஆனால் அப்படினால் இனிமேல் வருகிற நியாய்த்திர்ப்பில, சோதோமைக் காட்டினால் அதிக நியாய்த்திர்ப்பு உனக்கு உண்டுன்னு சொல்லார்.
So the judgment to you will be more than to Sodom.
ஏனென்றால் நம்மை கையில அதிகம் ஒப்புக்கொடுக்கப்பட்டிருக்கிறார்.
Because many things were delivered in our hands.
அதிகம் கொடுத்த உண்டு அதிகம் கேட்கப்படும்.
And that which was given more will be asked more.
அவன் அதை ஒப்புக்கொடுக்கவிட்டால், அவனுக்கு அதிக அடிகள் உண்டு என்று லோகாவிலே ஏசு பேசுகிறார்.
And in Luke of Luke, and Jesus prayed that, and it was not delivered, there is more punishment for him.
நம்ம கையில ஒரு விஸ்வாச ஜீவியைத் தேவன் கொடுத்துருக்கிறார்.
And the Lord have given life of faith in our hands.
அது நம்ம சரியான உதத்தில இல்லாவிட்டால், நமக்கு அதுலக்குதான் தேவன் கணக்கப்பட.
If we are not proper in this, and Lord will recognize in that matter.
அப்போ நாம் அதுக்கு சரியா கொடுக்கலேனா, நாம் இந்த சபையில வந்து நியாய்த்திர்ப்புக்கேதுவாக போய்விடுவோம்.
If we are not giving proper in the church, and we will turn towards judgment.
அதனாலதான் சொல்லியிருக்கு, "பின்வாங்கி போவானானால், அவன்மேல் என் ஆத்துமா பிரியமா இராது."
And so it is said that if he draws backs, and my soul will not have pleasure in him.
பின்வாங்கி போனதுக்கு நீ ஒம்புரிஷன காரண சொல்லலாம்.
And you may tell reason for your backsliding or the husband.
மனைவியை காரண சொல்லலாம்.
And you may point out your wife.
நீ பெற்ற பிள்ளைகளை காரண சொல்லலாம்.
You may reason your children.
உன்னைப் பெற்ற பெற்றொருலை நீ காரண சொல்லலாம்.
Or you may reason about the parents that you beget them.
ஏதாவது ஒரு ஊழிய காரணை நீ காரண சொல்லலாம்.
Or you may tell about the servants of God.
ஏதாவது ஒரு சம்பவத்தை நீ காரண சொல்லலாம்.
Or you can give reasons about some incidents.
இலவிட்டுல ஆதம் சொன்னது போல பீசா, ஏவாலை சொல்லலாம், ஏவால் சொன்னது போல சர்ப்பத்தை நீ சொல்லலாம்.
And like Adam, Adam said to Eve, and Eve to serpent.
இப்படி யாரேவது ஒராளை நீ பின்வாங்கி போனதுக்கு காரண சொல்லலாம், அது நியாயமாக இருக்கலாம்.
And you may point some person as a reason for your backsliding or drawing back.
ஆனால் நீ பின்வாங்கும்போது தேவன் உன்மேல் பிரியமா இருக்கமாட்ட.
But when you draw back, the Lord will not have pleased in you.
ஏனென்றால் உனக்கு கிருபை கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
Because he gave you grace.
அவிஷேயம் கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
He gave you anointing.
பைப்பில் கையில கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
He gave you Bible in your hands.
ஆலமான உபதேசங்கள் கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
He gave you deep doctrines.
அப்போசல் ஐக்கியம் கொடுத்திருக்கிறார்.
He gave you apostrophe.
ஓலிருள்ள பரிசுதவாங்குடைய சூன்தரத்தில் உனக்கு எடங்குட்டிருக்கிறார்.
And he given you that particles are the saints of light.
இதுக்கு மேல உனக்கு என்ன செய்யணும்?
And more than what should be done to you.
ஆ, எல்லா செஞ்சிட்டு உன்னத்தில் எதிர்பார்க்கிறதை நீ கொடுக்கலேனா, அதுக்கு ஜட்ஜமெண்ட் உண்டு.
And doing or delivering all these in your hands, if you do not do, there is a judgment.
அதனால பின்வாங்கி போறதுக்கு நீ காரண சொல்ல, காரணத்தைத் தேடாத.
So don't tell reason for drawing back, or don't seek after the reasons.
நீங்க அனைக்கும் பின்வாங்கி போனதுக்குப் பல காரணங்கள் சொல்லுவாங்க.
A minute tell reasons for their drawing back.
ஒருசல குடும்பத்தில் ஒரு மரணம், அவங்களை வெளியே கொண்டுபோடுவோம்.
And sometimes the death will take them away.
ஒரு மரணம் வீட்டில் நடந்திருச்சினா, அது அவங்களை வெளியே கொண்டுபோடுவோம்.
If the death occurs in a house, that will take them away.
ஒரு தவரான ஒரு நடாவடிக்கை நடந்திருச்சினா, அது அவங்களை வெளியே கொண்டுபோடுவோம்.
And if you're wrong in conversation, may take them away.
இப்படி ஏதாவது ஒரு சம்பவங்கள் கூட உங்களை வெளியே கொண்டுபோறதுக்கு, இளுக்கிறதுக்கு காரணமாக இருக்கலாம்.
And there may be some incidents at your home, maybe reason to draw you back.
ஆனால் விஸ்வாசவீரர்கள் அப்படிப்பட்ட சூனலைகளிலே பின்வாங்கவில்லை.
But the heroes of faith were not backslided in those situations.
உன்னை வெளியே கொண்டுபோறதுக்குதான் அவர்கள் பிரயாசப்படுவா.
And he will labor to take you out.
ஆனால் விஸ்வாசவீரர்கள் அந்த சூனலைகளிலே பின்வாங்குனது கடையாது.
But the heroes of faith were not turned back in those situations.
அவர்கள் அதற்காக சத்யத்துக்காக, உபதேசத்துக்காக கடைசிவரி நின்றவர்கள்.
And for the truths and for the doctrines understood till last.
நீ பின்வாங்கினால், நீ கெட்டுபோகறாய் என்ற அர்த்த.
If you draw back and you are corrupted.
இந்தக்கும் கூட பின்வாங்குற ஒரு கூட்டத்தை நீங்கள் பார்க்கலாம்.
Even today, we can see when people of group that they were drawing back.
ஒன்று விஸ்வாசத்தில் பின்வாங்குவது.
One is drawing back in faith.
மற்றொரு பகுதிலே பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
When we see another part.
லோகாயிலத்தினு சுவிசேஷம் 8 மதிகாரம் 13 வசனத்தைப் பார்க்கும்பொழுது.
When we look unto Luke Gospel Chapter 8, Verse 13.
லோகா 8, 13 பாருங்கள்.
கற்பாரியின்மேல் விதைக்கப்பட்டவர்கள் கேட்கும்போது சந்தோஷத்திருந்தேன் அசனத்தை ஏற்றுக்கொளுகிறார்கள். ஆயினும் தங்களுக்குளே வேற்கொல்லாத படியினாலே, கொஞ்ச காலமாத்திரம் விஸ்வாசித்து, சோதனை காலத்தில் பின்வாங்கி போகிறார்கள்.
இங்கே கற்பாரையில் விதைக்கப்பட்ட ஒரு கூட்டத்தைக் குறித்து பார்க்கிறோம்.
And here we see the people of group that they have fallen off.
நல்ல விதைகள் தான் விதைக்கப்பட்டது.
Good seeds were sown.
விதைத்தோன்னு நல்ல மனிதன் தான்.
And the one who sown was good man.
அவனோ ஒரு பெரிய எதிர்பார்ப்போடுதான் விதைத்தான்.
And with great expectation, he sowed the seeds.
ஆனால் அது விளுந்த எடா என்னது? கற்பாரை.
But there it was sown, it fell, it fell on the rock.
அது முழைத்தது.
It sprout.
அது வளர்ந்தது.
It grew.
ஆனால் ஒரு டைம் வரும்பொழுது.
But when the time comes.
அது செயலற்றுப் போகுறதை நாம் பார்க்கிறோம்.
And we can see it women without none effects.
இது விதையைக் குறித்தல்ல, ஒரு தனிமனிதை வாள்வைக்குறித்து ஏசு பேசுகிறார்.
It is not about that seed, but the Lord, Jesus speak about the personal man's life.
கற்பாரியின்மேல் விதைக்கப்பட்டவருக்கு கேட்கும்போது சந்தோஷத்திருந்தேன் ஏற்றுக்கொளுகிறார்.
And they on the rock, or they which when they hear, receive with joy.
பிரசங்க கேட்கும்போது இன்றுச்சார் இருக்குங்க.
When you hear the first sermon, you'll be joyful.
அதோடு இருந்து கதையைச் சொல்லிட்டா, இன்னும் ஜோக்காட்சி நல்லா இன்றுச்சார் கேப்பீக்க.
Then I tell add two more stories, and you will hear with joy.
இந்த வசனங்கள் யாவோ இருக்கோம் இல்லையே, இந்த இன்சிடெட் நான் சொன்ன, கதா உங்களுக்கு அப்படியே பயிற்றடையும்.
Whether you remember the word of God or not, but the incident or stories which is.
ஆனால் அது முக்கியமல்ல பிரியமானவர்.
That is not important believer.
ஆனால் சூனலை மாறு.
The situation may change.
அந்த நேரத்தில உனக்குள்ள வேறு இருக்கான் பார்கணும்.
At that time, you must check where the root is there.
அவர்கள் வசனத்தைக் கேட்கும்பொழுது சந்தோஷத்திருந்தேன் ஏற்றுக்கொளுகிறார்கள்.
When they hear the word of God, and they receive with joy.
பாரக்கீழ இருந்ததுனாலே, அவர்கால் வேறு கொள்ள முடியவில்லை.
And rock fell down, so they were not rooted up.
கொஞ்ச காலம் விஸ்வாசத்தில் நிக்குறது போல காண்பிக்கிறார்கள்.
And they says they were standing for a while.
எல்லா குட்டங்களுக்கு வருவாங்க.
They comes for all of them.
எல்லாரா போஜனையுடன் போடுவாங்க.
And they take part in the meeting.
போய்ட்டன் வைட்டு போடுவாங்க.
And they, we are white and white.
மீச தாடியிலா எடுத்துருவாங்க.
And they will take away the mustache and.
அவசரமான அவசரமான நகைய கலத்திருவாங்க.
And they will hastily remove the jewels.
நாம் மர்ந்துருக்குமாட்டேன், திருமான எடுப்பாங்க.
They take determination, I will not take redemption.
படடான பிரதிஷ்டையெல்லாம் ரொம்ப ஸ்பீடா இருக்கோம், இப்போமே சியோன் யர்ஸிலேம்க்குப் போய் கதவத் தட்டிருவாங்க போல தெரியும்.
Very speedily, they will take concentration of concern sign and Jerusalem, and they will be trying knocking the door immediately.
ஆனால் சோதனை வரும்பொழுது.
But when the temptation comes.
சிறின்னு பாத்தா, இவனை இருக்கவே மாடா.
And will turn, turning back, you will not.
சோதனை காலத்தில் இவர்கள் பின்வாங்கி போனார்கள்.
And at the time of temptation, they were drawn back.
விஸ்வாசத்தை விட்டு நீ பின்வாங்கி போகுற ஒரு சூனலை, ஒன்று சோதனை.
And the turning away from the faith is one point is the temptation.
அதனால சோதன வராது எல்லாம் பைப்பில் சொலவே இல்ல.
So it is not said in Bible, temptation will not come.
சோதனையினுடைய இன்னொரு வார்த்தை பரிச்சை.
That another meaning for temptation or test.
அவர் சோதிக்கப்பட்டார்.
He was tested.
அவர் பரிச்சிக்கப்பட்டார்.
And he was tried.
ஆ, அப்படிப்பட்ட சூனலை எல்லாருக்கும் உண்டு.
And such a situation is for every form.
இவனை நீங்க கஷ்டப்பட்டு பிள்ளைகளைப் படிக்கவேகிறீங்க.
And with difficulty, you are making your children to be educated.
ஆனால் அந்த பிள்ளைகளுக்குப் பரிச்சை இருக்கிறார்.
But they have exams.
அது ஒரு நாள் இல்ல.
Not one day.
முந்திய காலங்களை நீங்க பாத்தீனா, ஸ்கூல்ல மூனே மூனே எக்ஸாமு தான் நடக்கு.
And the early days, only three exams are conducted.
Quarterly, half yearly, annual.
Quattally, half yearly, and earn annual exam.
கொஞ்ச படிப்பு, இதெல்லாம் கொஞ்ச முனைரி வரும்பொழுது, அதுக்குப் பிறகு மிட்டம் வச்ச ஆரம்சா.
And when they progress in the education, and the midterm is just started.
இன்னும் எஜுகேஷன் போட்டிலா வந்த உண்ணே, அதுக்குப் பிறகு மஞ்சிலி ரிவிஷன் எல்லாவை கிரம்சா.
When education comes in competition, they conducted monthly and revision test. But nowadays, it's not like this.
காலில போஷன் சாங்கால பரிச்ச இல்லைன்னு, இன்னைக்கு பாடா நாளைக்குப் பரிச்ச.
And morning portion and evening test, or today's lesson or tomorrow's test.
அப்படினா என்ன அர்த்த?
What does it mean?
பிரசங்க கேட்டு வெளியே போனவனே பரிச்ச என்ன அர்த்த?
After hearing the sermon, when you go out, you have test.
இதே இது இப்ப விஸ்வாச வாள்க்கையில் வந்திருச்சு.
And this same thing comes in the faith life also.
ஒருதன் ஜபிச்சாக.
One prayed.
ஒரு நாள் ஒரு பிரசங்க.
And one day it was a sermon.
ஒருமையைக் குறித்து பிரசங்க.
And about the patience.
பிரசங்க முடியும்போது எல்லாரும் உப்புக்குட்டாங்க.
At the end of the sermon, everyone submitted them.
அவர் எல்லா விஸ்வாசிகள் ஆந்தவரே, எனக்கு பொருமதாரணு பயங்கரமா ஜபிச்சா.
All the believers started to pray, "Give me patience."
மொடிஞ்சி வீட்டுக்குப் போறதுக்குள்ள வலிலியே ஒரு பெரிய பிரச்சனை வந்திருச்சு.
After, before going, reaching the house, and there comes a problem.
ஒரு பெரிய உபத்தரம் வந்துட்டார்.
A great tribulation came to them.
அப்போ பிரச்சனை ஐயானோ நே துக்கப்பட்டான்தா விஸ்வாச.
And the believer read about the problem.
ஆந்தவுடை கேட்டா.
And asked to God.
நான் கேட்டது என்னது?
What I asked.
நான் கேட்டது பொருமை.
I asked for patience.
பட்டு நீங்க கொடுத்தது உபத்தரம்.
But what you give tribulation?
நான் கேட்டது கொடுக்காமை, எனக்கா ஆபோசிட்டா உனக்குடுக்கிறீங்க.
You give not what I ask, but you give your contrary thing.
அப்போ ஆந்தவர் சொன்னாரே.
And the Lord said.
உபத்தரவன்தான் பொருமை உண்டாக்குன்னு பைப்பில் சொலுகிறார்.
And the Bible says, "A tribulation gives patience."
உபத்தரவும் பொருமையை உண்டாக்க.
And the tribulation gives patience.
அப்படிதான் பைப்பில் சொலுகிறார்.
That is the Bible saying.
ஆ, நீ உனக்கு ஆசிர்வாத வேண்கிறேனா, அது பணமா வரும், பொருளா வரும், ஏதாவது ஒரு திங்ஸா வருந்திருவோம்.
If you need blessing, and it comes from money or through any other materials.
ஆ, அதுக்காக எனக்கா அச்செட்டிச்சிட்டு நேர கையிலும் உண்டு குடுந்து சொல்லக் கூட நீ கேட்கும்படியாது.
And you cannot ask them to print it and give in your hands.
யான் முன்னாலே நீங்க பிரிண்ட் பண்ணி காஸ் கொடுங்க, சாமி, அப்படினால் கேட்கும்படியாது.
And you cannot ask unto God.
யப, அதாவது சோதனை எந்த சூனலையிலே வரும்.
And temptation may come at any situation.
பலையர்ப்பாட்டில் ஜேவன்டை ஜனங்களுக்கு சோதனை வந்தது.
In Old Testament people, they resist temptations.
ஆனால் அவர்கள் சோதனை நாட்களிலே தேவனுக்கு கோபமொடிநார்கள் இருந்து பைப்பில் சொலுகிறார்.
But the Bible says, "At the time of trials, and they can deliver anger up to God."
உன்னடையோரு வார்த்தை தேவனை கோவு மொடியிரலாம்.
Your words may make him angry.
சோதனை வரும்பொழுது பின்வாங்குற ஒரு கூட்டம் இருக்கறது.
And there is a group of people, when the temptation comes, they may fall in.
சோதனை வரும்பொழுது விஸ்வாசத்தை உட்டு வாளுகூற ஒரு கூட்டம் இருக்கறது.
And one group of people, when the temptation comes, they go away from faith.
சோதனை பாவத்திலதான் வருன்னு நினைக்கக்கூடாது, இன்னைக்கு எழுதிவச்சிக்க, சோதனை ஆசிர்வாதத்திலும் வரும்.
And don't think that since temptation comes only through sin, it also comes through blessings.
எழுதிவச்சிக்க, எழுதிவச்சிக்க, அதாவது சோதனை பாவத்தினிமித்தம், பிசாசினிமித்தம் தான் வருன்னு நினைக்காத சோதனை ஆசிர்வாதத்திலும் வரும்.
And write it down only, this temptation comes not only through sins or by demons, also it comes through blessings.
ஆ, முந்திய காலங்களில் சொல்லுவாங்க, "தேவன் கொடுக்காம சோதிக்கறார்னு", ஆனால் இப்ப சிபியம் உடைய வார்த்தை, "தேவன் கொடுத்து சோதிக்கறார்."
In the earlier days in CPM, they used to see, and the Lord given out not, and test them, but in these days, Lord give it them and test them.
உன்னுக்கு உளித்துக்கொண்டா சாப்படுக்கடையாது.
In those days, when they come to the ministry.
நல்ல ட்ரெஸ் கடையாது.
And no proper garments.
எத்தனையும் நால் பசி பட்டினில் கடந்தாக.
And many days starved and have face hunger.
இப்ப அந்த ஸ்கீமே கடையாது.
But nowadays, there is no scheme like this.
Ipa ellame already, ipa mune masutukke saapadukke ellava sadhigalo, already ellame store fulla arukka, pandakasala narambe irukke.
Now the store houses fulfilled before three months and whatever is needed is fulfilled there.
Anika adela unmea arukano, innaki idela unmea arukano.
In those times, they should be faithful in that, but in these times, they should be faithful.
Onaka devan aasirvadaththi vasadhiyil, vaipugale, nalla velayin, nalla posting kuduthu, appriye oni ekondurum bolu, ni adela guda, adaliye gavanandu vichin, ni pinnalapiduva, adu da onaka sothena.
When the Lord gives you blessings and facilities and good position and thoughts and you must be proper or faithful in it and then the temptation comes and you must be no more in it.
Manushinukundagum pugalchiye, avanukke sothenai, Bible la vasana theli vacholi irukke.
And there is a word the Bible says, the fame that comes to man is a temptation to him.
Oni topalakonduva marukko, ni adaliye nambikittu poongbolu, visvashtavuttruva.
And you may be going out, reaching to the top and when you are going there and you may lose your faith.
Pisasam remba kanninga navaraale.
And Satan is a cunning one.
Ni jabathla da remba teevarama arukana, adal vichie oni kaavutradu kattreipanua.
And if you are speed in your prayer and he will turn over you through your prayers.
Ni aavudangalile, ni gavanasavathreena, adavichie oni kaavutradu kattreipanua.
If you pay attention towards the miracles and he will revert you in it.
Ni fasting, fasting, fasting porana, adaliye oni kaavutradu kattreipanua.
And if you take fasting mode and he will take steps to revert you in fasting.
Ni panadukpinale porana, adavichie oni kaavutradu kattreipanua.
If you go after money and he will revert you through money.
Naapadhanal fasting.
Forty days fasting.
Esu ka adaliye oru sothena vichcha.
And Jesus got temptation in it.
Ni yada virumburayo, ni yada spiritual neenakiriyo, adaliye onaka oru kaniyuvidi vaypa.
And what you desire and what you think of it and there he keeps it down.
Edhukittare, ubas edhukittare, konjinala chethupiduvaani.
And take fasting and within a few days, you may die.
Oni fastakonduva vachira.
And fastly, he will revert you.
Idha unma priyamana.
And that is the fact.
Ah, ubas edhu, 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 edhu ma, ivavadu ubas edhu pa, oru aarum asam kalichu, okarambe yada, adhambe yada, narakambe yada, apdi vandruva, tirippi unaka kodal punnaiidu, onumeelama final piduva. Avam papa right okay, innora naapavosiruppana naja, quicka kali bandanu morichuva.
And taking fasting for six months, six months.
Ni paralavum bove, eyimpanne arathukku poomata.
You will go to heaven, but you will not go to the place that you aimed.
Adala da ongalakindarootla onaka adikinun teriyam.
And you know to which route you be.
Onudaya belavinaya edhu, onudaya bellani edhu, idu da avam pathikittareepa.
And he will look unto your weakness and strength.
Onudaya belavinathil oni thakka onaka mudiyoo, onudaya bellathil oni thakkaruka vachipanua.
Is able to attack you in weakness, he will try to attack you in your strength.
Yuttu abrinu vandita thaavitha beatpanave mudiyadu, Bible la oru arathalakku da thaavitha thottada Bible la kadeyadu.
And battle and no pleas and David is defeated and Bible, Bible no caution, we can see he was not defeated with her.
Maamishom pengal abrinu na easya thattiipiduva.
But if there is a carnal flesh of the woman and he will be easily beaten.
Alaga orunal yuttathukku pooradama vichie, avanudaya lifee karappadi thutupeda.
And one day, he was not able to go to the battle and he corrupted his whole life.
Na edukida cholra.
Why I say this?
Onudaya valkeela sothenai varum.
And temptations comes in your life.
Sothenai sagikramanchan bakyavam.
And blessed is the one who into the temptation.
And sothenila onmea arundha, namaninisi van, jeeva gridathai peruvan.
If he is faithful, the temptation, he will receive the crown of.
Orisalar yelambi, devi sugathra, namarnde adathala, marnde adathala, marnde adathala, marnde adathudhalankaradu oru saachi alla.
And some says, standing at divine healing, I do not know, is not taking medicine, but that is for testament.
Adha veliyasolavanti avasiyamla, adhu visvasatin, visvasatin ragasyam.
There is no need to tell it outside and that is the secret of your faith.
Visvasatin ragasyathen, ni eneseyino, sutta manasaachila kaakkano, adayathu micabichikke, naan vandu, padanijvarshamaha marnde adukavale, adathunal aspithiripidene, enna panuva, ni solle.
With pure conscience, you have to keep the secret of your faith, you don't want to take your mic and confess it.
Pisasakke niye edang kodukara.
And you are giving room for divinity.
Adha solavanti avasiyamla, oru visvasi marnde adukamata, adha avanudaya concept, avada.
There is no need to tell it out, believer will not take medicine, that is his concept.
Adha avan avanudaya concept.
And that is his own concept.
Orisalar phone manikakarangananga, indha aspithiriponande, na enna, eh, refer pantradukke, na oru doctora, enna neenakirinene, enakupuriyala.
And some calls and ask me to go to which hospital am I a doctor to refer you.
Adavudhi janangal vandu sabayinudaya, andha aalamana, vera, avangina kandubikile.
And the church did not identify the truth or the root of the church.
Sothenai yindharidili varum.
And temptation may come in any form.
Yeah, onthaay mulama varla.
Or it comes through her mother.
Onthaappun mulama varla.
It may come through your.
Onsabay uuliyan mulama varla.
Or through the servant of God in church.
Yindharidila vandala, ni edirkolla readya arukano.
It may come in any form, but you will be able to resist it.
Aavikuriyavalkila pinvankaradu, enbadu namakki irukkeve kuda.
And in a spiritual life, and there should not be concept of drawing back.
Karanamenna.
And what is the reason?
Avakal vera kollavilla.
And they were no present.
Vera kollada budinaale, avargal sothenile pinvankararak.
And they were not rooted up, so in the time of temptation, they following.
Eberair naangga madhikara, modala vasanathai parkumbadu.
When we look at the book of Hebrews, chapter four, verse one.
Eberair naanggu once. Aanabadiinale, avudailai paradil prevespadarka eduvaran vaakathatham, namakundaa irukkan, ungalil varvannu adayaamal, pinvangi ponnavanaka kaanapadaadha badikke, bayandirka kadavom. Avudailai paradil prevesikka edukka eduvaran, vaakathatham namakundaa irukkada.
A promise being left of us entering into his rest.
Yelai paradil prevesikka kudiyae oru vaip, adavudhi oru hall ticketo, elavitao, oru ulapodukke oru passo onaka karchirukke.
There is a chance, a hall ticket, a pass to enter into rest.
Paralavutti yelai paradilukkula porukke, onaka, enna kake, oru pass kodukapattukara.
A pass is given to you to enter to rest of heaven.
Aana, adha adayaamal, ni pinvangi ponnavanai irukka kuda.
But you should not seem to come short of it.
Onaka karcha vaip, ni bayanbuddanu.
You must make use of the opportunity.
Indha olakathal remba yelai paradil kadeyadu.
We don't have rest in this world.
Yelai paradil kaalam ini varukarada irukkara, nde vedam cholukara.
The scriptures say, the rest is to attend.
Yindharidil, nam yelai paradilai vituva veda.
At any situation, we should not leave this rest.
Padinovara vasanathai parkumbadu.
When we look into eleventh verse.
Oruvaagilinkilpadiyamayinale, vilindu poogada badikke.
And none being regret of this disobedience.
Nam in the yelai paradil prevesikka jaakkaradayaa irukka kadavom.
And let us all take heed to enter into the rest.
Indha olakathal namak karcha yelai paradil vera, nam ini adaya pogare yelai paradil, adu nitthiya yelai paradil.
And the rest that we have got is different, but the rest we are going to attain is different.
Andha yelai paradil prevesikka rakka daana, vaakathatham namakaila irukke.
And to enter into their rest, the promise is now in our hands.
Andha vaakathatham namakaila irukke, aanaal, adha adayaamal, nam pinvangi poogu kuda.
The promise is now, it is in our hands and without getting it, we should not come short of it.
Yappodu, nam bayathoodu, bhaktioodu kaanapadano.
And we should be always with fear and godliness.
Indha yelai paradil prevesipunkaradu, yallar ko orai time la kadeyadu.
And this, taking you into the rest is not the same time for you.
Neermayai nadavargal, tangal padukkailile nisirarak, yelai paradukarak.
And they that are perfect and they are resting in there, they.
Yappo, namakku pravarnu, namakke teriyavadriyadu.
And we do know when he calls us.
Avakoodambo, na varamata, ningavaramata, na yarmen nisimbeda, chollave, mudiyadu.
When he calls you, we cannot tell, I have not come.
Chitiyini ipa koodalakumbo, ongalakku pravarnan, inayku pravarnan, poitavano.
Suddenly, in the meeting, if he calls you, you must go.
Na vidukpo varamati, neenakulila.
Are you telling, will you not allow me to go home?
Ya ku pravdhalum, poitavano.
And if he calls any person, you must go.
Adhu yenna naraathala maranavaranu, namakke teriyadu.
We don't know when that a death comes.
Aana, onudaya maranav, onaka yelai paradilai poichare.
But the death must be risen, you must go to the place.
Maranadukpinale, ni aisurianapala, polamikittukkara oru valke, ni poichare, iduva kuda.
And you should not have a lamentation life like rich man and entering into.
Onudaya yelai paradilukka oru poratamunde.
And for your rest, there may be conflicts.
Ni varkeela bohamarukkara oru poratamunde.
And then with the conflicts that you know, cut off with the coming.
Yeah, oni pinvanka vichita, avan vandu, andha araththa thattiirva.
If you make you to turn, turn back and he will take that please.
Yovalidu nusvisheshamara madhikaram, arvatiyara vasanathai parkumbadu.
When we look into John the Gospel, chapter six, verse sixty-six.
Yovalaaru, arvatiyaru. Adhumudal avudaisi charil anegar, aurudani koona nadavamal, pinvangi ponnargal. Avudaisi charigal, oru kutai, backslide pandrak.
And one group of his disciples, they went back.
Yeah.
Why?
Yovalaaru, arvatiyaru.
Sixty of John.
Avudaisi charil anegar, ivagale kaitapuladu, idu kadinamana ubadesam, yaari idu kaitpargal, indhargal. Ubadesam kadinama arukansulite, oru kootam pinvankada, aga Bible cholukara.
And one group of people, they were drawn back, big sins, the doctrines are hard.
Nam sabayinudaya doctrines, konja looseponna, indha aralan narambi valiyoo, velulile, naadha periyacharche, pastra mariva.
If you loosen some doctrines in our church and the hall will be overflowing.
Ni enna nalum vandu.
You can do anything.
Ni vanditupon, sonapodu, aduvaadukka naranjiriduva, oru aattam, patama, konja, style amati, konja drum beatla, konja mati adicha bodu, matthi valibuni, engadha arpa, engadha okandruva.
If you change the style, if you change the drum beating style, and now many people will come and enter into the church.
Divine healing, prachinaya illa, ni yavthan, aspithile padukka, ingavanda podun, chonna, prachinaya kadeyadu.
And there is no problem and you can come here, you can stay in hospital and many people will come here.
Ni appriyavutikka, enna nalum vandu.
And you can be any garments.
Olakathal oru concept undu.
And there is a concept in the world.
Adi, engka poimanchalum, prachinaya kadeyadu, ana, paal karakamattu, ingavandarunuma.
And wherever, wherever the cow goes for the, for the field and it comes back to the, that is enough.
Kali la maadhaavututva.
And they will loosen them account in the morning.
Adha yavan thottatlamayidu, engka poidu, yenna sududu, engka adivanku, yenna vandu, karate, sangalakarate, paal karakamodu, ingavandarunu, ingavandarunu, kali la paal karantu, adu veliyavaidu.
It may go to.
Adha manisala sabaygal, paal karakadukmattu, sabayla visvasikala vachiraka, appri na vachan, chonna, inga paal narambi valiyoo, adu narambi valiyoo. Adha unma.
And that is fact.
Ana nam apri alla.
But we are not like that.
Nam apri patta karigundu seegaradu illa.
And we are not doing such matters.
Nam oru school mari nathur.
And we are conducting as a school.
Yeah.
Why?
Ivargal Kristi Esuukul thairnavarla imarun.
And they must come perfect in Christ Jesus.
Yindha manushinayinkristi esuukul thairnavan, niruthumbadiki, avarey, nangalarivithu, avarey da ubadesam pandru.
And do any man to get in prayer, Christ Jesus, we preach unto him and through him, and perfection unto him.
Namakke idu da namudaya kolka.
And that is our principle.
Idukakave, indha ulidukakave, nam harpanikaro.
And for this, we are delivering into our ministry.
Idilavandu, nam remba stikta arukaro.
And we are strict in it.
Namakandikaro.
We are proving them.
Teavapataavangala tandikaro.
If needed, they are punishing them.
Teavapataavangala odukaro.
If needed, we are dissolving them.
Yeah.
Why?
Enna karano?
What is the reason?
Avungasariyil, chonna, avungalaku preojana illa.
If there is not proper, there is no use of it.
Ivangala konduva thairnavala, niruthara, namudaya kaila devan koduthu oru uuliyam.
And to take them a perfect and that is the ministry given in our hands.
Luca onnu yavutthiyaal, ningavakumbo.
When we look into Gospel, Luke, chapter one, verse seventy-seven.
Anga enna choliyukkara.
And what is said there?
Utthamamana janathakatharka ayatha paduthano, adha dam pudiyarpati sabayinudaya uuliyam.
And to prepare the.
Onnu, onnu, Luca onnu, padinell.
One seventeen of Luke.
Pidakthuludaya, tippaligal, thirukunkilpadiyaru, needimangal, nyanathirukkum, tirippi utthamamana janathakatharka ayatha paduthukara, adhu pudiyarpati uuliyam.
To make the ready people felt just and that is the new testament ministry.
Abba namudaya uuliyamay, adha utthamamana janathakatharka ayatha paduthu.
And taking the just people to our ministry, I'm taking perfect, that is a ministry.
Madha sabayinudaya ubadesangal, nam sabayinudaya ubadesangal, konja toughave irukke.
So the doctrines come back to the congregation, our congregation is somewhat tough.
Madha arathalala state board arukala, idu konja ICC arukalan, yoosikira.
And some congregation may be like the state board and it may be IC, IC syllabus.
Unma dana, international syllabus namavachirukra, avada.
And we have international syllabus.
Adala puligal konja tougha da arukoga.
So it is tough for our children.
Padichyveliyavarambo, thairnavarla, varuvarla, ndu visvasikara.
But when they come out and they become perfect, I believe.
Ah, abba naamay, yindha level, nam namudaya puligala konduvarano.
So what level we must bring our children?
Visvasathil, ni pinvanka kuda.
And you should not draw back in your feet.
Sothenegalil, ni pinvanka kuda.
And at times of temptation, you should not.
Yelai paradil, ni vituva kuda.
And you should not leave your rest.
Ubadesam kadinama arukannu, pinvanka kuda.
And seeing the doctrines are hard, you should not draw back.
Abba na esu chunnar, ningalum poradha manada, ningalum pogal, annu, padinundu siyadran, parthu pesinad.
Looking into the disciples, said, and if you have heart to leave, you can leave.
Abba na pedrichunna, nitthiya jeeva vasanangal umadathala undu, nangal yenge, poovu.
It's an alert, it's with you, where will we go, said by Peter.
Indha, indha, indha pentecostal prasangata yathukkara, oru visvasikka gift venu.
To accept the pentecostal preaching, a believer must have a gift.
Palag gift arukala, pisasathurathra gift arukala, arputangal chera gift arukala, adhalaa rendavudhi, ana, modal gift, indha satyathak, angigirikara oru gift.
He may have any gift by chasing the devils or doing any miracles, but we must have a gift to believe this doctrines.
Girekurutha Matthew, patthambothala, padinunthala, esu theli vaka pesukara.
And Jesus clearly speaking this incident in book of Matthew, chapter nineteen, verse eleven.
Varametavargale, thavara, mattavargal, indha vasanathai yathukollamattaragale, neesu cholukara.
And Jesus said clearly, and they that have gifts and cannot accept these words.
Indha devanudaya puligal, pinvanka buludhu narakara, kerdu enna?
And what is the temptation took place to the children of God when they draw back?
Na modalavudhi chunnan, visvasathla pinvankaadey.
First, I say, don't drop back in feet.
Sothenegalapinvankaadey.
And don't drive back a time of temptation.
Ubadesathal, edari puyaradey.
And don't stumble in your word doctrines.
Ah, adhenarathal, namudaya jeevietla, pengalukku, nam edang kodukumbo, pinvanka vaipugal irukkara, aga Bible cholukara.
At the same time, the scriptures say, when you give room for women in your life and you may have chances to backslide.
Ubavamam, padinell, padinellai parkumbadu.
When we look into Deuteronomy, chapter seventeen, verse seventeen.
Raja vahagirundha, avan pengalukku edang kodukka kuda.
And if you are king, and he should not give room for women.
Anegam pengalay, avan vaykumbo, avargal, avanay, pinvanka vayipark.
And if you have many women and they make them to the by the five.
Apprinu na enna arto?
What does it mean?
Belavinathukken, ni edang kodukumbo, onudaya valkele, ni keele varuvaay.
If you give room for your weakness, you may come or fall away from your life.
Avan irudayam, pinvangi poogada badhi, avan anegam streegalay, padakya vandam.
And his heart now turn away and he should not have many vibes to himself.
Onnu rajaakal, padinunthru, moonray, nam parkumbadu.
When we look into first Kings, chapter thirteen, verse three.
Eleven, verse three.
Eleven, verse three.
Anga enna cholapattukkara.
And what is said there?
Salemoon, anegastreegalay, pinbatinidhal, avunudaya irudayam, pinvangi ponnada, aga vedam cholukara.
And the Bible says, and Solomon followed after many women and his heart was turned back.
Maamushathin badi, ningal aanayo, pennayo, virumbi poogumbo, automatica, ongaladu irudayatla, tholvigalum, pinvankalum, thanagave varum.
Currently, if you follow after the man and woman and you will have the backsliding or turning away a bell in life.
Manaviyirukka, purushanirukka, innoraala, ni thadakuda, pinvanka, appri poogumbo, ni pinvankuvaay.
Having husband and wife, if you are seeking after any person and you will fall away in your life.
Onaka vivakam, ahamal irukumbo, oru pennayo, aanayo, ni thadakuda.
When you are not married, don't seek after a man or woman.
Bible la enna cholukara?
What is the Bible say?
Manaviyay. Uurlavala vasanala, ndiri, indha vasanala, ndiri. Manaviyay, thadade.
And don't seek after wives.
Niya oru manaviyay thadade.
And don't look after wife for your own self.
Niya oru purushanathadade.
And don't, according to own desire, don't seek after husband.
Manaviyay kandadakar, manjivanakandadakaran.
And some says, indeed, that was looking at a wife and receiving the life.
Adha parisutavangal, katti vayipanga, bharu, abba na ni kandadayano.
And when the saints of God is arranging you, you must seek after them at that time.
Niya thadana, adu karaisala tirippi, ingavandu, okandu, alidukkada arpa.
And if you seek after yourself and you must cry and must lap and lap.
Adala da Salemoon, indha vishetala, thavara sengja.
And Solomon committed wrong in this matter.
Avanudaya valvin vilchikka, adu daan karana.
And that is the reason for his falling in his life.
Bravantamanavaraale.
And he was a tremendous.
Ana vilgai, angada nathandadu.
But there happens a falling.
Negeemi, padimuna madhikaram, imu yarvatiyara vasanathai parkumbadu.
When we look into book of Nehemiah, chapter thirteen, verse twenty.
Raja vakyasalamoon, idinala, paavum seidha nalava?
And Solomon committed sin because of this.
Avanikola raja, undaayarundhalidilai.
And is the no king like Solomon?
Avan devanal, snehikappattavanayarundha.
And he was beloved of his God.
Aana, indha streegal, avanay, paavanchaya panninarkay.
And but these women made him to commit sin.
Belavinathukken, ni edang kodukka, edang kodukka, aniya maamushaththi, ni pinthodara, pinthodara, onudaya valkele, pinvankadhal, vandukundaya irukkum.
And you give room for the weaknesses and when you give room for the strange of fleshly natures and the drawing back or backsliding will follow after you.
Backslide vandu, oru priyapin, oru vilchaya konnduruk.
And backsliding will give you a make great falling.
Ennahamam, muppati yarande, padinajay parkumbadu.
When we look into numbers thirty-two, verse fifteen.
Anga enna choliyukkara.
And what is said there?
Ni pinvanka, pinvanka, ni oru edathap, oru kurikappattu edathap, ni adayaamatai.
And when you backslide and turn back and you will never go to the please, desired please.
Ni alayindu gundeyirupai, uni, uni, katharaaliyappanuvar.
And you may seek after, but the Lord will make it to destroy.
Ningal avarivittu, pinvankinaal, innu vanandharathalaya irupirigal, kaanannukul, bohamatirigal.
If you turn away from after him and you again leave them in the wilderness.
Ningal avarivittu, pinvankinaal, ningal aliweergal, ndu vedam cholukara.
If you turn away from him and he shall destroy, say the way Bible.
Devanay, vittu, pinvankadu, andha tanmai, namakulla, varaavee kuda.
And we should never have the nature of drawing back from God.
Avagal devanukku, virudamai, marividu.
And this become contrary to God.
Devan, perumilol, devan eduthinikkarana choliyukkara.
And the Lord receives the praise, says the Bible.
Irandhamnala, hamung, yarvatiyara madhikaratle, nam parkumbadu.
When we look into second Chronicles, chapter twenty-three.
Anga enna cholapattukkara.
What is said there?
Padinella vasanam, enna cholukara.
And what does the seventeenth verse say?
Appalu, the janangal, ellarum. Ille, sorry, yarvatiyara vasanam.
Twenty-three, twenty-seven.
Ille, ille, yarvatiyachi, yarvatiyala, parunga. Yarvatiyachi, yarvatiyala.
Second Chronicles, chapter twenty-five, verse twenty-seven.
Amatsya, kathari vittu, pinvankina kaalam, mudakkandu, ercinevil, indha vargal, avanukku, virudamaha, kattupadu, pandikonda. Ni kathari vittu, pinvanka, pinvanka, palavallamigal, onaka virudamai, pudupudu virudigala, ellambarampi pa.
Then you are not drawing away from God and many enemies or adversaries will come after you.
Pinvankumbo, ni neenakirav, visvashtavutti, nam veliyavandutto, sabay vittu, veliyavandutto, ubadesathu, ubadesathu, vittu, veliyavandutto, sothenal, nikka mudiyala, appri, ni edukara, ana, pisas, enna mantra, oni alayavatra.
When you turn away, you think that you came out of the fellowship, you came out of the doctrines, you came out of this temptations, but the devil is making you to roam around here and there.
Or devanudaya puligal, pinvanka, pinvanka, avanukku, virudamana, palasakti gal, ellambarampikara.
A child of God, when he turns away or drawbacks and many powers will resist him.
Ni katharka, nikka bo, oni patha, ellapisasum, bayapadu.
When you stand for God, all the demons will fear, looking unto you.
Ni pinvanka, aramcha, odane, ellavirudamai, ellamini.
When you start to turn back and everyone will resist you.
Oni pathu, bayandha sakthi gal, oni pathu, pariyasamano.
Then all the powers that were feared of you will mock at you.
Idha unma.
And that is a fact.
Simpson, wallamaya arukumbo, avan pathu, bayandanga, avanukku, munaale, orutunavaramata.
When Samson was powerful and they feared at him and no one can come before him.
But avan vilindu poonabodu.
But when he was fallen.
Avanudaya kangal, parikappadade.
When his eyes was plucked.
Avanay, vedikke, porulaha, machinark.
And then made him, the thing to show off.
Avanavana, ah, aranma, andha, priyamandapatala, kondundu vatranga.
And they brought him to the palace and.
Edukondu, naan, derima?
Why did they bring him?
Avan vandu, vedikke, kaattanama.
And he must exhibit something to them.
Adhey, vandha, oru vandu, kaala, ulavudra, pottunukuppa, ulavudra.
And he fell, bowing down.
Avanak, koranga, maatitana.
And he made them monkey.
Nallala, ninga purujikinnu.
And you must understand.
Ningal pinvankumbo, ongalukku, oru pinvankadhal narakadu, ana, innoruvilathila, sathru, onakurudamai, kodiyattarampi pa.
When you backslide and turning away is happening in you and any male horses flag.
Ningal pinvankidin, ni abridi teriyam?
How you can know that you are backsliding?
Pinvankadavavam, vandu, yappalu, remba tirptiyarpa, nallarke, enakku, idu bodu, appri, yubrima, adavudhi, avanukku, valachia, pathi, sindha, varadu, irukkara, bodu ma.
He that turned away, he says, I am well, I am sufficient, and he never take heed in the matters of growing.
Needi muligal, padinanga, padinallala, choliyukke, pinvangi pogaravan, tanvaligalil, tirpti, ulavan.
And fourteen sixteen of Proverbs says, and he that is back turning away is satisfied in his ways.
Fourteen, fourteen.
Fourteen, fourteen of Proverbs.
Anga enna choliyukkara.
And what is said there?
Pinvangi pogaravan, tanvaligalil, tirpti, adayavav.
And he that, man that is satisfied for himself, is turning from his ways.
Correct, naan, vandu, chikara.
And whatever he comes, he thinks it is correct.
Isaiah, onnu nal, enna cholukara.
And book of Isaiah chapter one verse four, what it is saying?
You are going to go to the church.
And why you gone away backward?
That is what I am saying, why you have to go back?
And fifth verse say, why should he be stricken of him?
You are going to go to the church. When you turn back or go backward and you get beatings from God and especially Satan. This is what we believe in.
And this is the point that our belief is entangled.
When you go to the church, your parents are beating you. When you reach to school, teachers are beating you. You are going to be beaten by God and Satan. Because you are going to be beaten by God and Satan. And to make you to come out from it, turning back, the Lord is punishing you, chastising you and reproving you, corrupting you. But you are having not have turned back. What does book of Zechariah chapter one verse six say? You are going to go to the church.
And Zechariah chapter one verse six says, and when you turn back and you become a destroyer.
We are going to take you to the church.
And the turning back is the power taking us to judgment.
Check how you are.
What is your state? And what is our state?
After coming to this way, you should not be backsliding. When you come here, you must stand. When you consecrate yourself and you should never turn back in your consecration. We are going to do it.
And turning back, that experience is not useful for us.
I will say.
Once again, I say.
I say, don't remove the jewels.
Don't remove the jewels. If you remove, don't wear it.
Correct? You are not.
Don't remove.
If you are not going to do it.
And it is your story and his story not allowing you to.
You are not going to do it. So you are not going to do it. You are not going to do it.
But the Lord is giving no chance and standing near the door, you cannot shout.
You are not going to do it.
So it is your part and God.
But when you remove, don't wear it again. We are a Christian.
And we are a believer girl.
When she was at Patavira. She went to Tirunindra.
And she studied at.
Tirunindra.
At next station.
She was a good believer. I went to the railway station. And she was standing near this lover shop.
I looked her, what she was doing. And she got one rose. And when train started, she kept it.
Oh, she has such a character. She is not going to die. She has bought 15 roses. And then she bought one rose. That is her birthday. When she came to the church.
She had the practice of taking this rose every day in the morning, when it comes at evening, it dried away, she will take it out and comes.
When we saw her in the church. Her father left everything. Her life, another person left the church. You are going to do it. Once you leave, it will be like crying.
Recently, I saw her in a meeting, a pathagat was sitting with wearing the jewels. And if you are going back, it will completely draw you back.
You have to think carefully. Take it.
And whatever decisions or determination you take and you must think a month or twice, then you have to take.
I will go. Can I go? Can I live in my family? You are going to think. If you are determined to wear white garments and you must think twice and twice and but can you able to stand till last and counting all the losses and you must take this decision. I will not wear clothes. I will not wear clothes. I will not wear clothes. You have to do it correctly.
And with determination, take all these things, taking the moustache and plating beard and removing the jewels and coming in white garments.
You have seen Hitler's clothes. You have seen French's clothes. You have seen full red. You have seen full red.
And so different types, they used to change their style.
How many movies are there?
And don't be in disguise like cinema people, you are a Pentecostal man.
That is it. Women are like that.
Even the believer girls are like that.
You are always the same. You are a Christian.
And be in the one style and wherever you go, you are a believer.
He is a Christian. He is a Christian. He is a Christian. Daniel is not a Christian. He is not a Christian.
And he that is pleased to God and they will do the will of God at any place.
He is Daniel.
He is Daniel.
You are a Pentecostal.
You are a Pentecostal.
Wherever you are, you must be in the same style. You are not going to change.
The incorruptible seed should not change in you.
You are not going to change.
And you should not change according to the times and seasons.
If you change suddenly and it becomes negative. Follow the same style. You are not following. You are not following. You are not following. You are not following. You are not following.
And the spirit of God may chastise you, punish you and rebuke you and reproach you and whatever it may as one was tried, you will come out.
I have said to a man, I have thought about it. I am a pure goat.
And when I was tried, I have come forth as pure goat.
When you do a consecration, as it was pure as nail and you must stand till last. You are not going to change.
Like election manifesto, you should not be changed one or two days.
You are not going to do it.
If you take a decision, stand in it.
You are not going to do it.
You stand in the truth.
You are not going to do it.
That is enough.
You are a Christian. He will make you ruler in many. In any situation, you should not drawback. You are a single.
And the Proverbs chapter thirty verse thirty says, and the line that.
You are a single.
And you should be like a lion in this way.
You should not go.
And you should never turn for anything.
You are not going to do it.
Any struggles comes and you are lying, you must stand.
You are a single.
And righteous may be bold as lion.
You are not going to do it.
It stands the day, it never turns back.
You are not going to do it.
Even if it was better than going to death, then never go turning away from death.
I am a pure goat.
And from the day that you are keeping your feet.
That is a single.
And that is lying.
You are not going to do it.
And when it is taking the step, the Pentecostal style should know.
You are not going to do it.
Unlike a normal person, you should not go.
You are not going to do it.
And will any person like.
You are a single.
And you must stand bold.
You are a Christian.
And book of Job chapter thirty nine verse twenty two says, and the horse of the verb will never draw back.
You are not going to do it.
And it stands at the battlefield.
You are not going to do it.
At the time of the battle, it stand and die, but never get reversed.
You have heard of the battle.
And hearing the voice of it will shout as the he.
You are not going to do it.
And it never goes to drawback, but it stands for the battle to face it.
You have a smell, an incense. You have a smell, an incense. But you have a smell. You have a smell. You have a smell. You have a smell.
And this is the smell of the horse, somewhere the battle voice is heard and somewhere the voice rejoicing voice is heard.
You are not going to do it.
And that is different sermon, I do not want to enter into.
You are not going to do it.
And it is not an ordinary horse.
You have heard of the battle.
It hears the war.
You have heard of the battle.
And when the trumpet sounds, it goes out.
You have a smell of the battle. You have a smell of the battle. You have a smell of the battle. Where is it? Where is it? A child? No. You have a smell of the battle.
And what does its smell like from far away, that is at the battle, the sound of the trumpet. You are a horse.
You are a racehorse.
And you are the racehorse.
You are the horse.
And it is the plan of God.
You are the horse.
It is a plan of God that Job will conquer.
He is not going to win.
And David says, and he will not conquer.
Who won?
And last who conquered?
You are the winner.
And Job conquered.
Yes, the winner.
And God made victory.
You are a Christian.
Testing you and me brought here to this church and we will be revived over and he brought you, they don't make him to.
You are not going to do it.
The day of Christ must be the heads to be lifted up and you should not bow your heads down.
You are not going to do it.
And this horse will never turn back.
You are not going to do it.
And whatever the sword, whatever comes and it is slain and it stands, but it will never go back.
You have seen the race.
See what speed it goes.
You are not going to do it.
And without any control and it will go near the barrier.
You have seen it. You have not got control when you are in the round. You are not going to do it. You are not going to do it.
And it does not get the control or to stand on the particular round, it will circle, it will go above the round man and it will go near the barrier.
You are not going to do it.
And when hear the voice of the battle, it get ready.
You have seen it. You have seen it.
And even right in the story and after the end of the battle, when the king died, it will carry the king to the palace.
You are a Christian.
And you and I are the battle horse.
You are not going to do it.
And you should never turn back in the battle.
You are a single.
You are a lion.
You are not going to do it.
And you should never turn back in any situation.
You are not going to do it.
When you turn back in this period and you have wait can stand.
You are a Christian.
And Psalms forty four verse nineteen, what is it saying?
You are a Christian.
Our hearts were never turned back.
You are not going to do it. You are not going to do it. You are not going to do it.
Our hearts were never turned back and we are stepping with them.
You are a Christian.
And he was throwing the paths where there was.
You are not going to do it.
And we should never go turn away from the paths.
You are not going to do it.
And you should never turn away in your hearts.
You are not going to do it.
And if you have grieve about your wife in your heart and you have.
You are not going to do it.
If you have burden about your husband, your life may shake.
You are not going to do it.
So in this way, and you should never turn back even in your hearts.
You are not going to do it.
You may come in your white and white and may do everything, but where is your heart?
You are not going to do it.
Your heart should never backside.
You are a Christian.
And you are the people, child of God, standing for God.
You are a Christian.
When we look into second Kings chapter eighteen verse six and seven.
You are a Christian.
And what it is said there.
You are a Christian.
At the time of Hesekiah, the people never resisted.
He left the church. He was singing. He was walking. He was walking. He was talking.
And it is said very clearly.
How was his life?
He was not going to do it. And he never resisted from God.
He was not going to do it.
So the Lord was with him.
He was walking.
And he followed the commandments of God.
He was walking.
And with the swiver, he went, it was prospered.
He was walking.
And he made the people to go in that way.
He was not a Christian.
And the Bible says, no, no king is like him.
He was not going to do it.
And he never rebelled from God.
He was not going to do it. He was not going to do it.
And when it was announced, he will die and when he cried, the Lord added fifteen years more.
He was not going to do it.
And for his prayer and his slain killed one like eighty five thousand people.
He was not going to do it.
And for his prayer, the Lord made the son to go back.
You are a Christian.
Hesekiah is not an ordinary person.
He was not going to do it.
At any situation, he never drawn back from God.
You are not going to do it.
Till you never turn back and everything will be prosper to you.
You are a Christian.
Second Chronicles.
You are a Christian.
Thirty fourth chapter verse thirty three.
You are a Christian.
And it is said about a man.
He is a Christian.
And he is Joshua.
You are a Christian. Joshua, Israel's people. Israel's people. Israel's people. They are the ones who serve God. He was alive. They are the ones who serve God. You are not going to do it.
And you should never have the mind to depart from God.
You are a Christian.
A king Joshua, a child of God.
He took away all the dominations of the country. You are a Christian.
When you are in this kingdom, you must serve God alone.
You are not going to do it.
So all the days of their life and they departed not from the Lord.
You are a Christian.
And the word the Lord speak to us right now.
My people, my son, my daughter, don't turn back.
You are not going to do it. Don't have the heart to turn back.
You are not going to do it.
And don't have the unbelievable heart to turn away from God.
You are a Christian.
And don't turn away from faith.
You are a Christian.
And turn not away from faith.
You are a Christian.
And turn not away from your rest.
You are a Christian.
Don't draw back at times of temptation.
You are not going to do it.
Giving room for the weakness, don't turn back.
You are a Christian.
If you turn back, you will roam around.
You are a Christian.
If you draw back, many powers rise against you.
You are a Christian.
If you draw back and you will get beatings from God.
You are a Christian.
You are ordained by God.
You are not going to do it.
And you should never turn back for anything.
You are a single.
You must be bold like lion.
You are a Christian.
And you must stay like a horse in battle.
You are not going to do it.
And even they should not backsliding because of your heart.
You are a Christian.
You are Hesekiah.
You are a Christian.
You are Joshua.
You are a Christian.
And you and people should never turn away.
You are a Christian.
When you turn not away and everything will be favorable to you.
You are a Christian.
And what is the meaning of Joshua?
He is a Christian.
And he was ordained by God.
You are a Christian.
What is the meaning of Hesekiah?
He is a Christian.
And he was strengthened by God.
He is a Christian. He is a Christian. He is a Christian.
And they that were established and they that were strengthened by God will never turn back.
I am talking.
I shot my words.
Our time is getting old.
Let us all close our eyes.
You are a Christian.
Today, the Lord speaking to us, my son, my daughter, never turn away.
You are not going to do it.
And don't turn back at times of temptation.
You are a Christian.
And because of the faults and ministry, don't turn back.
I will nominate you as a lion.
I will nominate you as a horse in the battle.
I will change you as Hesekiah.
You are a Christian. I will change you as Joshua.
I will establish you.
I will strengthen you.
You are a Christian.
I will stand for me.
I will stand for you.
Let us all close our eyes.
You are a Christian.
And those who see, Lord, I will never turn away from you, close your eyes and bend your knees.
You are a Christian. You are not going to do it.
Today, in the presence of God, I confess, I don't know how my life would be, but I, you know what is happening in my life.
You are a Christian.
Eleven o'clock by eleven minute, I see, I never turn back.
You are a Christian.
My times are in your hands.
You are a Christian.
Not only today.
You are not going to do it.
Till the end of my race, I should never turn back.
You are a Christian.
In faith as well as doctrine.
You are a Christian.
Anointing as well as rest.
You are a Christian.
A temptation as well as battle.
You are a Christian.
And the heights and also the depths.
You are a Christian.
Death or peril or pestilence or depths or heights, whatever it may be.
You are a Christian.
And strengthen, I should never turn back from you.
You are a single.
Change me as a lion.
You are a Christian.
Change me as a warhorse.
You are not going to do it.
I should never draw back even in my heart.
He is a Christian.
The Lord is going to anoint you.
He is a Christian.
The Lord is going to anoint you.
He is a Christian.
The Lord is going to make, establish you.
He is a Christian.
The God is going to strengthen you.
You are a Christian.
And you will never turn back.
Amen. I have suffered. I have suffered. I have suffered. I have suffered.
Those who accept in the times of temptations and struggles and the time of the test of my faith, I have been drawn back.
You are not going to do it.
And if it may be not outwardly, but I got this triumph in my heart.
You are a Christian.
The Lord must forgive me.
You are a Christian.
And today, I receive the word of God.
You are a Christian.
Today, I keeping my life for the altar.
You are a Christian.
I keep my children, my generation of altar. Not only me, even my generation should not backward.
He is a Christian.
The Lord is strengthening you.
He is a Christian.
The Lord is going to establish you.
You are a Christian.
Anointing will come.
You are not going to do it.
And you will never draw back.
Amen. I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. I have decided to follow Jesus. No turning back, no turning back. No turning back, no turning back. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. Hallelujah. Pastor Joel said.
Joel used to say.
English is better than Tamil.
And Tamil is better than English.
English is decided. I am deciding.
I have decided to follow after Jesus, I never turn back.
But Tamil is not like that. I am deciding.
I persuaded to go after him, I never turn back.
Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Hallelujah. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Hallelujah. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. Hallelujah. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. We are in the middle, we are in the middle. Amen. How many youths are taking this decision?
Life or death.
Heights.
And establish, and fulfillment.
Whatever it may be.
I will follow Jesus.
How many servants of God rededicate you?
How many parents submit yourself?
Lord, it is enough that I backsliding.
It is enough that I face failure.
The times that I cried, it is enough for me.
I want to go forward.
I will never turn back.
How many are submitting? Don't open your eyes.
And the Lord who strengthen me Christ.
Anointing that he never turn back is coming down.
To overcome the world flesh and Satan, he is anointing you. Let two minutes alone he comes. You are a Christian. Amen. You are not going to do it.
His anointing notes in it.
You are a Christian.
The anointing that turneth not away is roars like lion.
Have you seen the warhorse?
It stands on four feet and it waves around.
The anointing that turneth not away, the spirit of God was moving. You are a Christian.
Roaring lion, the end lion.
You are a Christian. You are a Christian. Amen. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. I am a Christian. I am a Christian. I am a Christian. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. I am a Christian. I am a Christian. I am a Christian. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. I am a Christian. I am a Christian. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. I am a Christian. I am a Christian. Yes, we are in the middle, we are in the middle. Amen. You are a Christian.
The Lord knows the path it will go.
Why you will seek the word, not turning back?
Not because you have turned away.
You are not going to do it.
And the counsel is given to you, lest you not turn away from his ways.
God. And he want to come before he comes.
I end this meeting.
The Lord gives you.
Will yourself.
Strengthen yourself.
And confirm yourself.
You are a Christian. You are a Christian. Amen. You are a Christian. 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 You are a Christian.[1751.24]